Here.
Wrote.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Donorio.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum, please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge which will be led this evening by Alderman Haas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item D on our agendas, we have two public hearings this evening and I will ask the clerk to read out public hearing number one.
Resolution relative to determination of application for a special use permit for a proposed restaurant expansion for Camino, an existing restaurant located at 72 11-13 West Greenfield Avenue.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to staff, Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first hearing tonight is for Camino, it's a craft beer and burger restaurant in downtown West Dallas, 72 11 Greenfield Avenue. They're proposing to expand the kitchen into a tenant space on the same property but another tenant space to their west, formerly a vape shop, and restaurants are considered special uses. The intensification of the existing restaurant in this case also prompts a special use, so that's why we're here tonight for the public hearing. Just a little bit of history on the site and then the operations for Camino. Previously it was a smoke and vape shop, and then also prior to that Swords and Dreams for your sword, dream catcher, and iguana needs. The restaurant, the proposed Camino restaurant, existing hours of operation aren't really going to be changing. They're stated here as indicated on the screen, basically between 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So the existing restaurant is about roughly about 2,500 square feet with about a little over 60 seats. With the expansion area of about 1,200 square feet, they're going to have another 44 seats for customers. And then they're going to have two wall openings internally within the building to access the expansion area. One here, just north of the existing bar area, and then another just south of the existing bar area. This one will be primarily used for staff while this one will be for patrons. There is also going to be a secondary exit out the back of the building towards the alley as well as another entrance here to the front of the building. This is the main entrance here. There are, there are not going to be any exterior improvements to the building, it's all interior buildout within the building, updating floors, electrical, plumbing, and then removing an existing bathroom for a larger prep kitchen. So the building occupies the entire property and this is just an expansion into an existing tenant space. They're going to expand their outdoor seating in front of the building, in front of the storefront itself with obviously the expansion of the restaurant. And then 25 parking stalls are required by our zoning ordinance. There is enough parking in downtown West Dallas immediately behind this property. There are roughly about 40, 40-plus parking stalls just to the south of the storefront. But the rest of the downtown also has shared municipal parking for businesses, patrons alike. So Plan Commission's recommended approval in September and the property has been noticed in the Daily Reporter, the official paper. Property owners within 200 feet have been notified of this hearing this evening and we have received no objections to date. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation, are there any questions from the members of the common council on this item? Hearing done, are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience on this item? All right, and we will close our first public hearing and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Resolution to approve the year 2022 operating plan for the downtown West Ellis Business Improvement District and to adopt the special assessment method as stated therein.
Thank you. Mr. Schloss, when you're ready.
Mayor, members of the common council, tonight we do the annual process of reviewing the special assessment process for the Business Improvement District as well as adoption of their annual plan. The public hearing is by state statute relative to how business improvement districts are formed. The process starts with a plan that has a summary of accomplishments to date, a description of activities that are planned for the coming year, and a proposed budget. The Business Improvement District is between 70th and 76th Street along Greenfield Avenue, and it forms like a T shape on the east side proceeding north up to M A T C and south to Orchard Avenue. The budget process starts with an annual goal-setting session by the Board of Directors of the Business Improvement District. Bid committees formulate their concept of goals and objectives, they provide that to the executive director, and then the plan is adopted to the bid board and forwarded to common council. As part of the process, all the property owners are notified of the public hearing tonight, so therefore they can comment on the proposed budget for the Business Improvement District. This is how it is broken out, $88,000 for public services, $12,225 for supporting services, $20,000 for the design committee activities, and $3,500 for economic development, and $12,000 assigned for assistance programs. The overall budget is $137,525, and they have some money that is removed from that budget based on dues and other income that is received from promotional events. So the total levy amount is $107,025. This is the assessed value of the Business Improvement District, you can see the past history. There is an increase of $347,600 in value within the six-block area. The special assessment is determined by the Board of Directors and this is the amount that's assessed per property in the downtown. It's $5.58. You can see it's a small decrease over 2021. The goals for 2022 include under economic restructuring, shop local efforts, programs to fill specific locations in our downtown, hosting, networking events, promotional-wise, bring back the large family events, you might remember à la carte, and again, continue successful events like the car show. And those events are dependent upon volunteers and community partners being part of those activities. Under organization, of course, is working with businesses to address the pandemic recovery, working on an ambassador program, coffee with friends, and one of the big programs of the Business Improvement District is advertising grants to help businesses in our downtown. As well as in 2022, excuse me for the 2021 there, design activities, bringing more artwork to the corridor, working with the built environment such as art on fire hydrants, utility boxes, et cetera. I gladly answer any questions you may have or from any of the property owners that might be present here tonight.
Thank you for the presentation, do any members of the common council have questions on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I don't have a question, I do have a comment. I'm a 30-year member, you know, property owner and resident of the bid and I heartily support the bid and its activities over the years. It's brought a lot of great things to our downtown. And I imagine when we look around the room, we look at some of the growth that we've seen with the new businesses opening and all that, that we can attribute a lot of that to the activities of the bid and the work that they've done.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing done, are there any members of the audience with comments or questions? Please come up to our podium. Sorry to make you have to public speak. And if we could please have your address and name for our record.
Yes, well, good evening. My name is Anil Molina, I'm the owner of 7035 West Greenfield. It used to be solid.
Book solid.
Book solid, yes. And this is the first time I come, I have heard the names all over and over, but this is the first time I came to come to discuss this one. I got the list of the proposal of the assessments and out of ignorance, I would like to know what are all the addresses, there is only four, five, 10 people who we got on a special assessment. I paid last year, now my name is listed again for the assessment, and I love Milwaukee. I live in Florida, I just come for business, I do have other homes and properties in West Alice. But the problem that I face every time I come here is that the taxes are coming up and up and up and then higher. I try to keep the rent as low as possible because I believe there is a shortage of rentals. But I don't see that the city is doing anything for me besides adding assessments and increasing my taxes. I really would like to understand, and it doesn't have to be here, but if somebody can pull me on the side and explain me a little bit what the city is doing to bring investors like me from others' estate to buy property and put money into the buildings, I really would like to know something. I went to Book Solid and you know the struggles that I had between the mixed use and everything, and I had put over $300,000 just to get up to code, you know, and now I want to work downstairs, but the only thing that I see is taxes coming my way. You know, I really appreciate it, if somebody can just pull me on the side and explain me why not everybody has at least $10, just only a few names here, and I have been paying since I bought the stuff, you know, especially with that commercial. That's just all I would like to say, you know, somebody can help me with that. Because I don't see any benefits toward where investors like me just for the sales. I'll call you.
I'm on it.
Okay. Also, I got a contact, you say your word.
It's easy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Molina. Any other comments or questions on the second public hearing this evening? Okay, hearing done, we will close public hearing number two and we will proceed to item E on our agendas, which is citizen participation. The common council may receive info from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must announce their name and address, sign in at the podium and please limit your comments to only five minutes during this portion of our agenda. We cannot take action on these topics, but we can listen. See, we have Mr. Vicena up.
My name is Mark Vicena, I live at 1338 South 65th Street. I was trying to figure out, the last time I was here was when you guys voted to revoke the 6,500 bar license. They were having a lot of issues, a lot of violence, and it made my neighborhood and my street a bad place to live in. I came by today to thank the licensing committee and health committee on your vote to revoke the license at a spotlight or spot, whatever they go by, and I hope that the rest of the council votes with them to revoke their licenses. I talked to a lot of people and I hear a lot of the terminology or the word dirty status. You know, back in the day when Alice Chalmers was around and it was factory air pollution and bars on every corner and rooming houses and whorehouses, that was dirty status. Getting rid of this bar is going to be cleaning up the city and my area more than you guys know. You've got the police reports, you know why the license and health committee voted to revoke, and I hope you follow suit and vote in the same manner. There's a lot of things that I have called the police on, the neighbors have called the police on, noise. The retirees, the older people that live across the street from Greenfield Avenue. Shaplesky, Alderman Shaplesky, he was, he was called, I called him, I've called Vince, you know, I called the police. But by the time the police get there, the noise has stopped, the deeds in the parking lot, when I mean deeds, I got, there's a lot of things that go on in that parking lot, drugs, acts of different things. So I just, I hope that the entire committee votes to revoke their license, so thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? All right, we will close citizen participation and we will move on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess, those room numbers are listed on the top of page two of your agendas. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report, I have a couple things this evening. Excuse me. Yesterday, we held the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Home Two Suites Hotel, which is the next phase of the Alice Yards project along 70th Street. And I just want to congratulate them and thank everybody for their support of this project. There's a lot of excitement about this progressing, it's going to be great for our city. Second thing is, October 7th, the West Alice Police Department held a recognition ceremony for award recipients from both 2019 and 2020, since there were no ceremonies in 2020. Recipients received Good Samaritan Awards, life-saving awards, superior police performance, severe, superior investigative performance, and distinguished service awards. I was joined by older woman Reinkie and Alderman Wrote was there with me as well. But I want to congratulate all those members of our fine police department for their hard work and their rising up and going above and beyond their already difficult jobs. Also on October 14th, there was a swearing-in and promotion ceremony for the West Alice Fire Department. This was also a merger of 2019 and 2020. We swore in seven firefighters that had passed their probationary period and also recognized the promotions of several members within our outstanding West Alice Fire Department. Also joined again by Alderman Wrote and older woman Reinkie at this event, and I want to just congratulate, excuse me?
We carpooled.
Yeah, you got a habit of that. So I just want to congratulate all the members on their promotions and welcome the new firefighters to the department. And lastly, on October 29th is the fourth and final flu shot clinic put on by the West Alice Health Department, and this one will be at the West Alice Senior Center at 7001 West National Avenue. It is open to all West Alice, West Milwaukee residents. There is a lot more information regarding this on the city's website and on the health department's social media. And again, the clinic is on October 29th from 1:00 until 3:00 at 70th and National. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any older persons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Stefanski.
I would just like to mention on October 10th, myself, older woman Grisham, and Wisconsin Truck Takeover Enthusiast Group did a benefit for John Holman and his family. He was the man who was killed on 84th and Lincoln over Labor Day weekend. And the shooter shop was wonderful enough to host it for us. And I want to thank all the people that were taking, that took part of it, so West Island Brewery, the Romero's Taco Truck, AJ's Crunch Food Truck, and then the Peanut Bar and Jelly Deli, Red White and Brews, Two Buck Saloon, Aunt Jenny's Barkery, Big Deal Burgers, Carrie's Crispy's, West Alice Cheese and Sausage, Natty Oaks, Dan Wrote, myself, J.C.'s Pub and Grill, Milwaukee Harley-Davidson, House of Harley-Davidson, Sudsy Soaps &amp; Beyond, Embellish Beauty Boutique, Rainbow Sales, Wrestling Taco, Suzette Grisham, Dean Wood, Door County Pantry, and Specialty Foods were all people who contributed to this event, so thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Are there any other older persons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Elder woman Grisham?
I have two things. Thank you, Tracy, and thank you to the truck enthusiasts who put together that event. I just want to talk about the seriousness of this loss of life here in our community and the impact. As we were discussing budgetary things and whatnot, Mayor Devine, you mentioned one of the focuses, or one of the main focus will be reckless driving. And I think it's imperative that we pause and take a moment to really reflect on this because this man, father of two children, husband, Navy veteran of 10 years, lost his life because somebody chose not to stop at 84th and Lincoln. And it's just heartbreaking, so I would like our residents to reflect on this a bit more, that there's nowhere you need to get, that you can't be a minute or too late. And those stop signs are critical, they're meant to save lives. And it was within a split second a life was taken, and it shouldn't have been. And on that note, again, thank you, I do have something positive to discuss too. Older woman Keen and I were contacted by one of our residents in D3 who is very interested in putting together a Halloween decorating contest with the houses. And D3 has just been showing off all of their displays and we are going to judge this on Saturday, October 30th. We celebrate Halloween on the 31st, trick-or-treat is from 4 to 7 this year, correct? And we look forward to see everybody out having a safe, fun time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other reports from the older persons? Okay. Alderman Lysik.
Well, Mayor Devine, I move for approval of the minutes of October 5th, 2021.
Second.
Some motion and a second, any changes to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Standing committee reports, I see Attorney Decker popping up, so I will acknowledge him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was actually contacted by the attorney for the licensee on the topic that's on this committee report, and I believe he'd like to speak on this if the council wouldn't mind opening the floor.
Is there any objection to opening the floor?
That's fine, but...
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the common council, my name is Attorney Patrick Ross. I represent the spotlight and both the agents. Based on the action within the revocation and as provided under Wisconsin Chapter 125, we are asking for the committee to allow us the opportunity to prepare a response which, per the statute, needs to be determined by the committee as a whole on whether it is a verbal, a written, and/or both. We would ask that it be a both and that it be, because of the nature of this type of meeting, we would be willing to do a time limit on what we may be able to present to the committee as a whole. But I think in presenting a case to the committee, we need to go through a written response on legal issues and a verbal response on some of the factual issues.
So would that be a motion to hold then?
Yes.
If the committee so, or the council so chooses?
So what Attorney Ross is saying is essentially there's a right under the statute for due process that he can file these arguments with the council. Attorney Sirwin and Attorney Hammack in my office would have to be involved for that. So at this point, I would ask that the council direct Attorney Ross as to whether you want to hear oral, writing, or both as far as do you want him to submit something in writing and then make oral argument? Or do you want to just hear it in writing, or do you only want to hear it orally? I think there's nothing wrong with accommodating and saying you're okay with both. And then I'll have Attorney Sirwin and Hammack appear on the November 2nd meeting to go through this process. So it's part of the due process that is allowed under Chapter 125.
So I'll ask Chairman Vitale.
Yeah, the fact that is, this committee had the presentations, the license and health with the, all the informations, police reports, on and on. To me, I mean, I've been around for a long time, this is the first time that someone really come forward when a committee come up with determination or decisions on the applicant of a particular address or establishment. So never really occurred before that someone comes forward to state effect and kind of renew it again. We heard we have already on records what really occurred during the process. I spent here five hours or more, along with the rest of the committee members of the license and health. So to me, it's unrealistic for this council really to reverse, I believe we have the authority, I believe, to follow through with the charges and follow through with the revocations which was presented by the licensee committee. So to me, really, it's totally unfair that we, we never done this before. I've been here 33 years, this is first time that we have someone representing a licensee holders to come forward and asking what really is to discuss. We have the authority within this community to release an establishment from doing business. If they violate, and it's sufficient evidence for us really to follow through, why we need anymore to hear, I mean, we like a judge here already. We made determinations at the license and health. Like I repeat myself, we spent here over five hours. So the fact that is, the charges are there and I don't, I don't foresee really that we should take up reconsideration to hear the concerns or the licensee holders once more. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Devine? Oh, go ahead.
Attorney Decker first.
So the, what's happening is, since the committee actually held this hearing, there is a provision in state law that allows a licensee to do this very thing. And I'll admit, Alderman Vitale is correct, it's not that frequent that someone exercises this right, but it is a statutory right the licensees have to sort of summarize the argument after the hearing occurs and present it to the council. And that's all that Attorney Ross is asking to do, not necessarily reopen anything or introduce new evidence or anything like that. It's just an argument of the facts that occurred and it gives the licensees their process that they are due under state law. So my recommendation would be to postpone this matter till November, the first meeting in November to allow the licensee and my office to put together those arguments in writing and prepare an oral argument as well. Because that is, that is a requirement of state law.
Mayor Devine, I heard a stereo request.
Thank you, Kayle, you actually answered the question, and sorry for interrupting you. But I did have another question. If, when we hear this and have a written statement and a rendering is made, if it is still revoked, is there another process that follows that, such as an appeal process, and can you explain that?
Sure, as far as the council is concerned, it'd be done. There would be an appeal process possible through the circuit courts under a writ of certiorari, which basically what that does is the standard a court would review would be, is there a rational basis for the council's decision? Did they follow the law? Did they come up with a rational decision? Did they stay within what the statutes require? And if so, they'll uphold the council's decision. So it's a limited type review, but there is an appeal right after that that does not involve the council.
Thank you.
Alderman Lysik.
I appreciate Attorney Decker's comments to us and his candor in advising us that if we want to make sure that this revocation is legal and sticks in the court system, that we have to provide this extra step. Attorney Decker, do you recommend that this be done on the council floor or that this be held and sent back to committee to be further litigated?
By statute, it has to go before the council.
Before the full council, okay. So then I would move that we hold this matter until the November 2nd meeting.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Stefanski.
We can require both verbal and written.
Yes.
I myself would like both.
Would you mind including that in the motion, that both oral and writing?
I have no objection to that, that's fine.
Any other discussion? Mayor Devine. Alderman Weigel.
One quick question, so would we do this at a regular council meeting or committee of the whole meeting before the council meeting?
The statute requires the whole council to meet with the mayor presiding to make a final decision.
So it would not be a committee of the whole meeting, it would be a regular council meeting?
Correct.
And would any action then taken then be effective immediately then?
Yes. It'd be effective immediately at that time.
Unless he, unless they appeal it?
If they appeal it, the only way it would not be effective is if they would get a stay from the court to the effectiveness of the city's order. So there would be a process that they could potentially stay the council's decision, but it's a pretty rare situation. What would most likely happen is it would be revoked, and then if the court would overturn it, it would be reinstated.
And then, is there a reason we can't do this right now? They're not prepared?
Well, and I also don't have our office's attorneys present, I could not actually argue on behalf of the city because...
I understand that, yeah, I watch the YouTube.
We had arrangements with one attorney being neutral and one being the prosecutor, so I'd rather have them continue that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
You know, the fact stands that try to, I mean, I call, I mean, I like to use this word to manipulate our system based on the chapter, whatever number is at the state level. To me, that's a big farce, really is, really is. So this council, I mean, if it comes to the, to the next council meeting, would be voting on something that we're going to approve the license? I mean, based on what evidence they're going to bring forward? They've been so clean, that establishment, they've been... They've been so clean, that establishment, they've been a trouble for many years, and not just the 10 time the police have been there. They've been an existing nuisance for the areas for many years. So to me, I mean, I lost, tonight, really, I'm losing, you know, kind of a track on what really we're doing, you know, I mean, all of a sudden, I never heard anything about the state has, there's a chapter where somebody can litigate anything, I understand that, but I believe a body of five people, or 10 council person, doesn't have the authority, really, have to, we have all those evidence in front of us. I mean, we're still going to play with this? To me, it's totally unfair. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I think I might have to ask the clerk to call the roll on this one.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ryan Key.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
No.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that wraps up item J. We'll move to item K, our consent agenda.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
Unless there's any objection from any of the council members, I would move that the consent agenda be approved as printed.
Second.
Motion and a second. If there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The eyes have it, the motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderwoman Reinkie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, we are in recess.